Good afternoon and welcome to the broadcast of the Enid City Commission Study Session Meeting. Broadcasting live in high-definition from the lower-level conference room at the City Administration Building located at 401 West Owen K. Gharriat. Please stay tuned as Mayor Bill Shuey presides over the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, City Staff, and guests here this evening. This is a very exciting night for us on the Enid First Team. I am here actually representing the Enid First Team, which is basically that half of the room over there. A little bit of history, just to make sure everybody remembers what got us to this day. The Enid First Team started getting together about five years ago. This team includes the Development Alliance, it includes Visit Enid, it includes the Main Street Office, our Chamber of Commerce, and City of Enid. We first started getting together in order to make sure that we were pooling our resources and that we were marketing our community as best as possible. I've told the story a million times of Development Alliance buying an ad in a statewide publication. We turned the page because we were so excited about it. Two pages later was one from the Chamber of Commerce, and two pages after that was one from our Main Street. And we decided, you know, it would make a lot of sense for us just to buy one big ad and move forward with it. Whenever we started doing that, we tried to design that first ad, and we realized we didn't really have a consistent message as a community. So we spent the next couple of years in a branding process. We worked with Kevin Friesen and Friesen Design to help us decide what could we market? What could all of our organizations market that would be consistent? And you see the word adventurous is what all of our marketing falls behind, whether you're a wildcatter, you're an ag producer, you're a fighter pilot, if you're a land-run person, all of that falls under the idea of being adventurous. And then we defined that with boundless and vibrant and original. And we took all of that brand and we developed a new logo. And all of our organizations, like what's on the front of this podium, changed our logos in order to match. So whenever we have a company come to town or a bunch of visitors come to town, we all throw our cards out on the table. We provide a consistent message as a community. And so we spent those first couple of years really focused on how we tell our story to the rest of the world outside of our city limits. The last two years, we have changed our focus to how do we market ourselves to our community? How do we make sure that we have 50,000 ambassadors that are telling our story and make sure that that is a consistent message as well? You've seen some of the marketing campaign with some of the billboards that are around town. You see some of our marketing pieces from our organizations that are very consistent. But we've gone through that whole process. We've started with the brand, we went through the logo, we developed a marketing plan, we have consistent photos and videos now on the enidbrand.com website that any of our companies and organizations in town can use. And I will tell you, this has been very successful. We are now getting visitors to this town and companies to this town that we've never had before. Our next step is to make sure we are pointing those people to cash registers. Mike Clemmie has always said that, I love quoting him on this, "We are like one of those old golf courses, country clubs, that doesn't even have the numbers on the tee boxes because everybody's been a member there for 50 years and they know exactly where to go." Enid has been that community. And you've seen a movement foot across our state and really across the region. If you visit downtown Oklahoma City, you see wayfinding signage. If you go to downtown Tulsa, you see consistent signage. And now if you go to Alva, you see consistent signage throughout the whole community. And Alva, whenever we saw them doing what they were doing, we really wanted to mimic some of that. And that's where we found Corbin Design. Corbin Design is at Traverse City, Michigan. They are really the premier company in the United States, I believe, on helping communities with a signage program. I want you to think of what you're going to see tonight similar to what we did as a community on the Trails Plan. We designed, or you designed, 36, 40 miles' worth of trails, but we don't have 40 miles' worth of trails in our community yet. As money becomes available, you add on another half-mile or add another mile and design that and make it work. What you're going to see tonight is the first steps toward a citywide signage program. And as the years go by, we can cut off pieces of that plan in order to have a consistent look to our community. One other thing that you're going to see tonight is the last two years, we had worked on entrance signs. And I will tell you, I believe you were probably wise, I didn't think that that night, but you were probably wise in turning down the entrance signs. What we've done is gone back to Corbin Design and asked them to look at something that would match the rest of the community but would cost less as well. And I think they've got some good options on that that you could look at as well. This evening, I would like to introduce Jeff Frank and Mary Lou Peel in order to come forward and present the Corbin Design Plan. Let you guys come up.
Thank you, Brent, for the introduction. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, we have a presentation here that we'd like to go through. And to be sensitive of your time, I'm going to try to go through this very quickly. I tend to talk very rapidly as I get rolling here, so please, if you have any questions, stop me along the way. I can slow down. I can slow down and back up. As Brent said, this wayfinding programs we put together, we think of them as signage, signs with arrows. Really, they serve as, for us and for the communities that we build them for, they act like a utility, they're directing people, but they do behave like a brand. They do carry brand elements. They pull communities together. And one of the biggest things that we talk about is sort of the hospitality aspect. Going to community, if you stop on the street and ask someone for directions, sure, they're going to stop, they're going to tell you and give you exact directions, they're going to be courteous, and they're going to be explicit, they're going to give you landmarks. But you can't expect that for all your visitors. A wayfinding system is that extension of hospitality. When you come into town, it greets you, tells you you've arrived, points out major destinations, points you to visitor centers where you can get more information. So this is the extension of the branding that we want to bring to Enid. So this is, the program here is part of a regional collaboration to promote and advertise the quality of life in the community. So we talked a little bit about that, about how this can improve the overall identity and community pride. And by that, we can bring in new business and visitors. So we're also greeting the new businesses and encouraging new businesses. And again, the new visitors we talked about can be anybody. It's businesses, it's new folks to the Air Force Base that turn over quite a bit, it's visitors who come downtown for, to go to the courthouse, to pay a ticket, to do something. When they're in town, this system can give them information, show them what else is available, and potentially extend their visits. It also strengthens historic downtown and its unique attractions, so again, pointing out those points of interest for people. We know there's already a strong visitor base, but we want to, again, extend their capabilities and show them what else is possible. Just really quickly, for us, we're a small firm, we're 12 people, but we've been doing this for 38 years, and we focus on institutional wayfinding. So we've done this successfully for cities, 65, we're actually approaching 70 or more now. We design systems to be built. We design a program for you that'll be a master plan, but our programs get implemented because they're practical and they're affordable. So we also do medical centers and education centers, so we bring to bear wayfinding from all angles when we talk about our programs that we put together. So really quickly, there was a sort of return on investment that was developed, and there was something like 5,000 people interviewed. And sort of, we abbreviated these here, these kind of short little interesting facters. 85 said that they would explore further if signage kiosks provided directions to additional attractions. I'll show you one of those opportunities that we're developing in our array. You're downtown for any other reason, you stop, you see a kiosk, I can show you what's a, five minutes from where you're standing, where to get a cup of coffee, where to do some antique shopping, where to see an historic building, extending your trip. 11% that they would definitely extend their trip by one more additional overnight stay. So think about the people who come here, 11% total. If they extend their trip one more day, how many more meals is that, how many more hotel stays that is? 70% would extend their trip. They come here for an hour, if I know there's things to do, if I know there's things to do, I'm going to stay longer. How long is that? That could be the entire day, maybe they bring the family with them next time. So in a rough calculation, 11% of the visitors surveyed here, that's 84,000 additional overnight stays in a three-year period. So people ask us, what is wayfinding? We simply define it as direction for people in motion. So we want to keep people moving, and that's what the wayfinding system does, through vehicular guides and a pedestrian system. We don't want you to become lost. Lost means you're disoriented, takes a while to get you back on course, we want to keep you moving to the destinations. And some of the things that we build into our systems is our systems are designed for the first-time visitor. So again, whoever that might be, maybe it's someone who infrequently comes downtown, they're considered or could be considered a first-time visitor. You know, they know where maybe one destination is or a couple of things that they're used to going to, but they're not familiar with everything. We definitely want to simplify a complex environment, so we're going to be simplifying things for visitors by controlling circulation patterns using clear and consistent terminology. The various design elements will be the physical signs in the environment, both vehicular and pedestrian, as well as some of the wayfinding logic that we're using can be translated to web, print materials, the way you communicate about how you give directions. Obviously, it needs to be flexible and inexpensive. These programs are designed to last, so the components, materials are designed to last 10 to 20 years. Think of what 10 to 20 years ago now to where you are today, where you are 10 years from now. The system has to be flexible and constantly evolving. And then, as I alluded to, be adaptable to various media. What we're laying out here has to be adaptable to the print and web, the way that we communicate those directions, because that's how people are going to research, do a little planning before they come here. What they see on the web should match with the, again, that hospitality aspect. Just really quickly, I'll flip through a couple of examples here, we're showing photographs so you can see some comparisons. So here's a welcome sign, this is a secondary, so smaller scale for a route that's mostly residential but has some new visitors on it. What's unique about this is that we can incorporate districting. So in this case, Frisco has two existing districts, Center City and Strombrier, and then there's a space at the bottom for a future district. So there's a large space of land that's currently being developed. We want to connect centers of activity, because we know cities generally have areas that are, may not be directly connected. We want to make sure visitors are aware that there's distinct areas which have distinct and unique activities or attractions in each one of those areas. Here's an example of their, Frisco's downtown kiosks. So in this case, this was funded by 1% tax, hotel tax?
No, it was a building tax.
Building tax. And it was to be used directly for art, public art. So we were able to leverage those funds, and these kiosks are funded by that because they incorporate public art elements. The tiling at the bottom is all custom, the finials at the top are functional, they serve a wayfinding component, but they're also functional weatherveins. And then those kiosks themselves contain a map for pedestrian wayfinding, and then this calendar of events. So we can tell visitors six months a year, what's available here, what are the major events that are happening. Again, if they're coming here for a destination or utilizing this, this may generate another reason to come. I'm going to come back in three months because I know there's a major event that I want to bring my family to, and I know what date it is, and I know a little more detail about This is our hometown, Traverse City, so we created some unique districting here as well. This is what we consider the warehouse district. It's an area that was previously full of warehouse buildings, and there was an obstructed view of the water, and when a power plant was destroyed, all of those warehouses, all of a sudden, had waterfront view. But it was already known as the warehouse district, so we sort of took what was intuitive about giving directions and incorporated into the wayfinding system. Here's a version of our pedestrian kiosk. We have a map, and you can see there's, we have three sort of, although our town is very small, three unique districts, again, because they have three unique characteristics, and we want visitors to experience all three of those. And then what we've done here is we've created a merchant directory, so shopping listed by antiques, amenities, all sorts of different restaurants, bars, and this is changeable. So this panel here is swapped out. In our case, our downtown district authority as being a part of the membership of that group means that you appear on this downtown map. And then these maps, this map references, or this directory map references the map location. So this has changed, I think, once a year, so all those destinations are current for visitors. We put it at the marina specifically to capture all that boat traffic as it comes in. Oklahoma City, so we can see we've got unique districting here, and again, we call this a trailblazer, basically a breadcrumb. There's something happening here, it's a different activity, encouraging people to extend their visit and extend their trip. Here's their version of a vehicular guide sign. So in this case, being hospitable, we want to make sure that people understand where the destinations are along, where parking opportunities are for those destinations. So very important to make that connection for people. And then the reinforcement, again, in this case, this is their branding. But what happens here is the unique silhouette of the sign itself, squared edges, becomes the unique silhouette, becomes a branding element. Here's Tulsa, and you can see the Art Deco influence in the sign, so taking architectural elements, again, grounding the signs, have it reflect the characteristics of the area. And this again is, would be a secondary gateway sign, sort of smaller. Here's their public parking signs, using the public P, universal sign for identifying public parking for visitors. So as part of our study and our analysis, we created a, looking at the circulation routes, we've determined that there are three unique areas with, for visitors to understand sort of spatially what's available here. What we're identifying here roughly is the varsity district right now, the downtown, obviously, and then the shopping's lungs, the west gharriat area. So what we want to do is make sure our wayfinding not only greets people as they come in town, but actually connects these centers of activity to one another, and then wayfinding independently within each one of those districts. That prevents us from having to have a signpost sign where there's, you know, all the arrows and blades pointing to 50 different destinations, which is not practical in a vehicular system. Now we can direct to the district, and when you get into the district, we direct to the specific destinations. That ties back to the external wayfinding program, so maps, printed materials, and vendors, and merchants, how do they communicate to their visitors? "I am out in the west gharriat district," signs will direct you to that area, and they can locate themselves relative to that district. So what we've done now is taken that analysis and created a design concept. This is a concept that shows four, I believe, four or five sign types. It's to communicate the design aesthetic that we've developed, and what will happen is, as we move forward, we'll be continuing to develop additional sign types. So what we've got here is the vehicular guide that we're recommending, we've got individual changeable panels, so again, being conscious of the evolution and the changes that may happen, we want these panels to be interchangeable and replaceable. Materials and components are all last and designed to last 10 to 20 years. So the finishes, materials, aluminum construction, designed to last a very long time. The graphics, the layout, and the messaging meets with DOT specifications for reflectivity at night, and also reflects the requirements for the size and font, so these can appear along state roadways, which is very important. So we're following, again, the hospitality aspect, we're following the DOT signs to get into town, and then we're using the same standards reflected in these graphics too. So the expectation is you're seeing the graphics equally, although in a much more unique design. We want to be aware and cognizant that the signs are seen from 360 degrees, the backside, so making sure they have such unique aspects to it. Also being aware of environmental conditions, there's a big wind load, and we know we have some strong winds, so making sure that we have cutouts and wind relief to release the square footage of the sign for the wind load. Here you can see that identity that we talked about, we have three separate districts, and then we have an identity of branding that happens outside or in between the districts that connects and unifies. All of that sort of revolves around the unique design, which reflects the architecture. So we have unique elements pulled from downtown architecture, and some unique patterning pulled from historic elements as well. Here's an example of what that might look like in the environment, size and scale-wise. So again, we want this element to blend in and feel like it's part of the community. We like to say that we want wayfinding signs to be there when you want and disappear when you don't need them. So after you see them for a while, they'll just be part of the background. New visitors, though, will be able to pick them out very quickly. Here's an example of the kiosk that I was talking about a little bit earlier that we had shown the examples of. So in this case here, we have a map. This portion here would be changed less often, and then this bottom portion down here could be that merchant directory element. It could potentially even have additional marketing or promotions, links to external websites for more information. And then with this sign type being vertical, you have a front and a backside. That backside can be a complete element that can be used for almost anything. The example I'm showing here is a calendar of events, but it could be used for interpretive information. Maybe this kiosk is located at a location that has some historic significance or near an historic building. That back panel can be pure interpretive, an explanation. So while some folks are in the front finding out where to go next, other people from the group can walk around the backside and spend five minutes learning something about Enid, come away with some history. We know the road speeds here, and the road widths and setbacks are higher speeds and setback further from the road. And according to DOT, we need to, we understand that there's a transition between slow speeds and higher speeds. So these larger texts are for the higher road speed roads. Again, sizes and reflectivity and messages and the number of messages all fall within DOT guidelines, but we're still reinforcing the districts and our core elements, design elements. We take away some of the design and the decorative elements here because here they're not as practical. You're moving by those signs maybe at 45 miles per hour, so we take away some of the One of the other sign types that we talked about being an initial investment, something that's low-cost but big impact, is a version of that freestanding kiosk that's sized down about three-quarter scale and mounted to existing poles downtown. Those can be implemented, you know, at very low cost, low impact, without installing new posts into the ground, and they can get the wayfinding system out there. Maybe this map has an inset in this corner here that shows you where the three other districts are. So there's an understanding of, here's where I'm at, and, you know, how quickly it is to access the other districts from where I'm located. And what we did, as Brent talked about a little bit earlier here, we took a look at how we can incorporate the gateway back into this system. There were some previous designs, this design basically takes the architecture and designs from the core wayfinding system and extends it out to the gateway, so it has the core elements, so it matches those. This sign here is essentially, the logo is the same size as the previous designs, only that it's a little more compact design, this uses a cabinet construction. We talked about even incorporating some lighting effects on this at night, so these letters would have a nice soft glow, maybe even some external light to light the silhouette, potentially even light the flag too. And then we were recommending some terracing with some landscaping elements to increase the footprint of the sign. Here's the sort of the full array, so you can see kind of the sign types in reference and scale to each other. And that is, that is our presentation, so. I know there's, no one asked a single question, and I can't believe there's no, there was no questions in that. Unless I talked so quickly, you didn't understand anything that I said.
Well, the number one question I have is, how much do they cost?
That's an excellent question. These are just designs on paper at this point, so they can cost, we can design them to any cost. If you want to talk about baseline costs, we're talking about, well, I think what the important thing is we're talking about the cost of the introductory signs, relatively low cost, a couple hundred dollars apiece, strapped to existing poles. As we move up, because of the DOT requirements for the breakaways, if we put them in the right ways, now you're increasing those costs. So potentially, this is a $2,500 sign, but the unit cost will go down as the quantities go up.
If I can add to that, we're going to cancel number five on the agenda, so we have time. Well, our budget request that we had made to the city that I think has been included in your budget was $15,000. And our, what you have seen is not a complete plan yet. What we'll have at some point is a list of priorities, of which signs the Enid First Team believes would be the first ones to be able to fund, but at least we could get our foot in the door and at least get some of these up, maybe at least get one of our pedestrian signs downtown and focus on one area of town and then grow it from there, kind of like I was saying, taking bites of the elephant as we go. And with signage like this, there is opportunities for private investment on that or other partners to bring to the table, and so really yours could be seed money that would help grow it from there.
Well, NOC just spent a huge amount of money on their signage, their wayfinding on the campus, their primary monuments coming into campus, and so we can certainly, that is the question I have, is I want to make sure that this gets tied in with all the work they've done, and they've done a phenomenal job with their, on the campus, that it gets tied in well with the branding they've done.
Yeah, anything you want to say about, you know, I know that we had looked at theirs, and this is very much a compliment to what they've done, even though it's not the exact same coloration.
Sure.
We had even looked at, well, do you want to try to match the colors? And if you do that, do you upset Northwestern or NOC? And so we went with kind of an orangish color on that.
So we want to take advantage of existing systems. This system will tie into those existing systems. So we lead up to, and then their systems pick up. So we wouldn't be replacing or updating, we'd be supporting those.
The other dollar amount number that I might throw out, the last entrance signs that you had seen were about $60,000 apiece, these are about $40,000 apiece. Anything you want to say about, does that fit within a typical cost? Is that unusual?
It does. And part of that cost comes from the internal illumination. I mean, obviously, we could reduce costs if we pull the illumination out, but I think in this case, it's important to those locations to have that. What we need to look at now is the availability of power at each one of those locations, pulling power to each of those locations. If it doesn't have it, that could be a cost. But the idea here is that as we're developing not just this small array, but the full array of sign types is, you'll have all those in a master plan. So as the program expands, you'll be able to go to this and pick the tools out that you need. That's really what we're trying to get to right now. As funding becomes available, you carve away at it, you pick pieces and you do it. The idea is you'll have the tools to do that.
Jeff, what does the "I" on those, some of those signs may refer to?
Yes, correct. Information. So only in the welcome center will we put the "I," and what we do is, at the location, we'll reinforce that.
"I" stands for Marcy Jarrett. That's what that is.
Yeah. The $40,000 figure, is that just your estimation? How did you come to that?
Yeah, it's based on similar sign constructions and sizes.
You built them somewhere?
Well, we don't build, we're a consultant, but it's based on input from fabricators that we receive. Correct, absolutely.
And what, how quickly would your turn around time be on that? How would your turn around time be on this?
On?
On the entryway sign?
Oh, well, I mean, I mean, as far as fabrication goes? Hmm, that's a good question. We need to get, once we get through this process, move into what we call We need to get, once we get through this process, move into what we call, well, we'll develop the full array, then we go into design intent. So we're still several weeks.
Our next step is to develop the full sign type array.
Yeah.
And after that, we'll do the sign message schedule and sign location plan, developing a sign message schedule and a sign location plan, showing what is going to appear on each sign, the location of each sign, and what type of sign is going to be at each location.
What we could do, though, is if there was a reason or you all wanted to fast-track the gateway signs, we could move right into design intent. That way, you'd actually have a drawing which you could take out to bid, and that way you'd get actual, and depending on quantities, if you want to do one or two or more, you'd be able to get a quantity breakdown estimate, too.
How far into that system is Oklahoma City and Tulsa? How far are they?
They're all developed. They were developed a couple of years ago.
The, another question on that is Alva, as they had worked with Alva to go through this process, I think some of Alva's first signs are being erected right now.
Correct. Alva has a completed sign type array, so the tools in the toolbox, and they've picked out a couple for me connecting their Northwest University to their downtown, so they're implementing a portion of it because that's the funds they have right now. But they have all the sign types as we're suggesting here, so they're ready to move ahead as money becomes available.
Do you have the one standard design? I mean, your designs and signs vary from location to location? Or is this just the way they all look, where you put them up?
No, they'll vary, because it depends on the road speed. So this is for speeds, road speed.
I understand the size issue. I'm just saying, it's the basic design of the sign.
The basic design is going to be very similar across the board. And the reason...
No, he's between cities.
Oh, between cities, they're all unique. So this, this is a completely unique design.
Talking about the components, maybe.
Yeah, so this silhouette, again, we're creating these, this is, nothing here has been used in any of our other cities, it's completely new. And that's what we do, we design custom systems, design custom systems for each city, because we want them to be unique. They're pulled, the inspiration here is pulled directly from elements in town. You know, this base is an off-the-shelf base, so this is a component you would buy. And the reason we do that is because it's really, it becomes cost prohibitive to do custom bases, so this element would be, but other than that, the components here, the shape, the design, all of this is custom.
You see this, you see this shape on the Event Center downtown, a lot of downtown, of course, this is the bottom of the logo.
Yep, yeah, so this, this is a reoccurring theme we see in a lot of building, in architecture, in downtown and just basically wherever we look, we're seeing this reoccurring theme here, so it's why we utilize that. Yep, and the chevrons as well, we see those as reoccurring, too. And then we selected blue. Again, we're, DOT is limiting us to the number of types of colors we can use. Blue is a really good high-contrast color, so, and we thought it was appropriate, blue skies, openness, we wanted to go with something that would stand out, there's a lot of green, so we went with the blue instead. So that's kind of some of the design direction.
And these signs here can be created, we believe, from the city sign department. So if Leonardo's museum becomes Socrates Museum at some point, we can go in and change those.
So as part of it, this isn't just going to be pretty pictures, we did develop, we called design in tents, so the, the construction details behind here. So I've already calculated and figured out how this system is going to be built. In fact, I don't, I didn't want to bore everybody with the details about how the panels are modular and interchangeable between one another, but they are. There's a frame that goes around the backside that supports all these panels, so all these pieces, if they're damaged, can be taken off and replaced and updated. If the sign needs to be refinished, it's all pulled apart. These panels can be produced by any local sign shop, they're just bent aluminum with reflective graphics on there, so it keeps it real modular. So we built in ADA compliance, overhead compliance, we build a lot of sort of physical design into the signs as well.
Any other questions from anybody? I don't want to take up all of your time. As you can tell, we're pretty excited about it. People razz us sometimes in Enid First Team because we're all about rainbows and butterflies over there, and we don't, we don't always have to deal with all of the other messes that go on here, but this has taken up a lot of our time over the last, really since last fall. Aaron?
I sat through the first rollout, we had a couple of different options, and I think this was the overwhelming preference among my group. But talk to the question about the process that you followed as the EERDA to come to this point.
Okay, that's a great point. We have been talking about wayfinding signage, and really, we've used the term sign consolidation in our meetings, probably more than wayfinding, this is the industry standard to use this, but if you look around town, we have a lot of sign clutter, and our signs don't always look consistent. And so really, for the last year, we've been trying to figure out how exactly we wanted to go about this, and whenever we heard that Alva had been working with Corbin, and then, and then found out that they had also worked with other Oklahoma communities, we started that conversation late last summer on what it would take to bring them in and design this. The Enid First Team is the one that funded their efforts up to this point, and, and have been very pleased with, with the working relationship that we've had with them. Our first meeting that we had was just with the Enid First Team to discuss our process, but then we also brought in a lot of our owners of different retail outlets or, or retail centers within the community in order to make sure they knew what we were doing because we want to make sure we're pointing people to their shopping locations. That was probably the most informative discussion that we had about what types of things we wanted to make sure we pointed out. You can't put on here, you know, the, an arrow to Dillard's, but you can to a shopping area and a shopping district. And as we became more proficient in what's legal and what's not legal, it made more sense to the different districts we're looking at.
Who controls what goes on the side?
Um...
The city?
Well, I mean, yeah, at the end of the day, it'd be the city of Enid. What we're going to do, we will provide you a lot of input on that and try to vet it so that it's, I mean, there's some political sides of figuring out what's on those signs also, and that's been part of our discussion is, how do we take that impact before you ever see it?
And the state-controlled, state-controlled roads would be the DOT would have, which is, Brent was alluding to, won't allow for-profit businesses to appear on the signs. So there will be a criteria for that as well.
We can use our public art money for that.
Yes, that would be, that would be up to the city.
So moving forward, what we're going to get from you then soon is a master plan for this, at which point we can adopt it and then move forward taking pieces. Is that what you have envisioned, Brent?
Yes, yes, you'll see a, you'll see a map of the city with where all the signs would be, it's probably going to have a big number attached to it, but what we've tasked ourselves to do is to prioritize which ones would be best to start with. Maybe we do these first ten signs and we spend ten thousand dollars doing that, and then next year, we can do another fifteen signs. And of course, that comes to you for your approval, but, but we will try to vet that before it comes to you.
As a follow-up to Ron, I wouldn't mind seeing, if you, if you all don't mind preparing, in your first presentation, you had, you had chosen some architectural pieces that somewhat influenced these designs. I think it'd be good for the rest of the council to see kind of how you came up with these individual pieces and maybe those pictures next to the signs, so we could draw that connection.
We will add that to the presentation when we come back with the plan. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank Corbin Design flying in from Michigan tonight to be with, with you and for their efforts, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item number four, discuss recommended sign ordinance changes.
Yeah, let me kick that one off, Mayor and Commissioners, and then Angela, follow-up of the slideshow that you've probably seen already. We enacted a sign ordinance, a new one, it's probably been more than, more than a year ago.
Probably 2012.
And twenty, twenty, several years ago. Time flies. And since then, obviously, there's been some, some issues, some concerns. What we're trying to do now is revisit and capture what those concerns are, what those reasons are that people have, may have been denied on signs, and bring those to you to visit about, show pictures about, and show recommendations, and then get your input on whether you want us to move forward on revising the sign ordinance. So Angela and her staff, Vanessa and whoever else, probably mostly you, Vanessa, has done a great job on this slideshow, particularly with pictures, so I'm anxious for you to see it if you haven't already, and, and see what you think of the thoughts and recommendations.
Well, just as we heard how important signage is to our community, it's also very important to our businesses, both the ones that are existing and the ones coming into our community. We find in code that we're having to say no to sign permits far too often, and so Gerald asked us to take a look at our data and try to determine what those reasons were and, for our denials, and see if we could come up with some solutions so we can say yes more often than no. Since January 2014 through April 30th, we issued 151 sign permits. Out of those, we denied 29. That does not include the 75% though that's mentioned below. These 29 were either permits that we knew were going to go to a variance because they said, okay, we're going to for a variance, or they said, we're canceling that, so we copied it, put it away, or it's set on Vanessa's desk for four to six weeks, and then we go ahead and copy them, file them away, and we'll resurrect them if we need to, otherwise they stay in our denied permit file. After speaking with Vanessa when I was doing this research, she told me that she believes she rejects about 75% of our sign permits. Thankfully, she's very diligent in working with our customers and our sign contractors to try to find a way to get them into compliance, and so she'll continue to rework them and, and discuss with the customer where they can make changes in order to get into compliance. Our sign ordinance is very extensive. My copy's 25 pages, Vanessa's is 32, just depends on how you print it, but there's a lot of information there. But when we did our research, we found that there's four basic reasons why we deny sign permits. First is the signage exceeds the allowable square footage, the locations of signs, our ground signs and our pole sign definitions are very, pretty restrictive and narrow, and then our window signs typically exceed allowable square footage. I'm going to take these reasons for denial one by one and give you some examples of each. These are a few of examples of businesses where we denied their request based on square footage. As you can see in the third column, there's the requested amounts and then the amounts allowed by ordinance. In all those examples, I believe, if we allowed double, that would have resolved most of these requests. Academy Sports, the number's off a little bit because what we saw originally permitted, requested in the code department was just for the academy building only and didn't include all of the other stores. So we never had that full amount, but I do have a slide later on that shows that their variance gave them about double what we would be able to allow them in code based on what the ordinance says. Here's a picture of CVS. Now, CVS was actually permitted in 2013. They did have to seek a variance, they wanted double their signage. They were allowed 536 square feet of signage, and this is something everybody drives by on a regular basis, and I personally think it looks nice. This is another store here in town that we permitted in November. They wanted a new freestanding sign, and they had too much existing signage, so they painted over that far end of signage, and then they came into compliance. That's the sign that they wanted. We've been working with Evans for quite some time, it's still a pending application. I had to pull this aerial view off of Google Earth, they've painted over their signage. Vanessa and I went out last week and did an estimate of what we think they had for grandfathered signage, and that was 320 square feet. What they would have been allowed, based on our ordinance, now is 222 square feet. So their grandfathered signage was about 100 square feet over what they would be allowed with the current ordinance. Back, I'd say, what, a year ago? About, about a year ago, we got a permit request from them for 408 square feet, which was about double what we could allow them. So we denied that permit. Then, I believe, two weeks ago, we got a new permit application, and they're requesting 638. So even if we, we do some changing there, I don't know that we can permit that, but if they're willing to go back to the other version, if we do make some changes in the allowable square footage, we could at least permit their original request for 408, I believe it was. This is very small, as, I apologize, we couldn't get it to, to go much bigger and fit it on the slide, but most of these retail spaces, if they would not have gotten the variance, then, and just gone with what they were allowed per ordinance, they would have had, take the middle suites, for example, 20 feet of frontage, so they would have been allowed 20 square feet of signage. You guys just recently went through this, and I believe based on the package, you granted them about a two to one. So a recommendation that I believe is good to at least consider would be potentially to increase the allowable square footage. I kind of have two areas of our ordinance, one says one linear foot, one square footage of sign per linear foot, and then another area says a 1.1, and we go up to the 1.1 just to try to give them more room, but it's a little bit conflicting even for staff because it, we just need one way to calculate it. And then if it exceeds 200 square feet, we would also be recommending to increase that allowable square footage. So using CVS, once again, as an example, the new formula would allow 507 square feet versus 279, so they would not have needed their variance.
And the variance allowed for refreshment, how many square feet at CVS? I mean, what do they have now?
Um, let me look. CVS actually has 536, so they would have been just a little over, but probably in that case, they do what so many businesses do right now when we deny that 75%, they just keep working it and working it with Vanessa until they get it where they need it to be.
Well, and that's also something, as we present this, this is a recommendation, so if the commission feels like we need to get more, we could, but we're trying to balance that with, you know, not having unwieldy signs all over the place, so, so it's up to you, this is just a recommendation.
Right, I know Whitney worked hard on the ordinance when she was here, and I am assuming there was a reason that the commission wanted it changed at the time, but maybe now we're seeing that we're having to say no too many times to businesses that want to come into our community or that are already existing here.
I don't have any heartburn making things a little bit simpler or loosening up the restrictions a little bit. I mean, I don't want to open it up for a free-for-all of, you know, every square inch of a building's face is signage and absolutely anything's allowed, just because I don't want to, we have a nice-looking city, let's not mess that up. But I mean, this does seem like even doubling it, I mean, the CVS level of signage seems reasonable, you know, but...
Oh, we, we have mixed emotions, too, as staff. I mean, I understand that we need, I do believe in rules and regulations, but this will at least let you see what you think is a commission and...
Is some of the problem with the ordinance is, it seems kind of complicated?
It is.
I mean, it seems unwieldy.
It is.
Can we, can we fix, I mean, I've got no problem adjusting the allowable square footage and all that, but can we also make it not so damn complicated?
I hope so. I think there's ways to do that. We hope so as staff, and I know Vanessa does. She, I, you know, working a permit three times to try to get somebody into compliance is, and they have the ordinance, so it must be... is, and they have the ordinance, so it must be complicated for other people as well.
What are some of these companies telling you about their experience in other cities outside?
It's a family show, we probably can't hear.
And.
What are they telling you?
That we're more restrictive on the square footage. Which is why they come in with their sign packages that get approved in other locations. But then again, I don't know because I don't, I hear what they say and sometimes what they tell us is maybe not true because we know sometimes what people say that we've said is maybe not exactly the truth, so.
Can you explain what variance causes?
Um, I can. If we deny a sign permit, then we quote the section of the ordinance that we based our denial on. And then they go to community development and meet with Chris and Carla and they put them in front of the board of adjustment. And the board of adjustment takes their variance request under consideration.
There's also one other avenue that we've used, like on the Academy and the Loves and the Pilot, for economic development purposes, we can route that appeal directly to the commission. So and then you guys control.
Yeah. Well, when we did the Pilot, we did the Pilot one that way. The Pilot's initial proposal was crazy. I mean, they wanted 5 million square feet of signage and, you know, you'd be able to see it from space and they, you know, they got a variance, it was still significantly more than would normally been allowed, but it seemed like it was brought down to a rational scale.
Pilot, I have those figures here and Pilot asked for 868 originally. They were allowed 307 and with the variance, they landed at 460.
Sure.
So that one would have been resolved with a increase in the doubling what's allowed currently.
I feel like what's happened with it, well, I've said from the very beginning of this ordinance that it is completely overly burdensome to the business owners, that it was done for the sake of bureaucracy almost completely, it seems like. And it seems to me, from looking at these lists, that a lot of the people that we're granting variances to are the big box stores and the chain stores and those people that we want to come into town, but we're screwing our existing businesses and people that live here already. And that seems completely unfair, completely unbalanced and completely ridiculous. And if you think about all of the hours of time that city staff has spent screwing around with this stupid ordinance, it's tons and tons and tons of wasted time and money. And that's ridiculous to me. And I don't understand why we are trying to make it so hard on our business owners of this city when we say we want to be business friendly and then I know that some of these have been going on over a year. That's crazy and it's over a few feet and none of it in the grand scheme of things really matters. Like Cycle Ward's, for instance, they can't put a sign on theirs just because there's not a door on that side of the building where they want to put a sign or its faces alley. Who cares? If they want it there, I mean, what, I don't understand why it matters to anybody other than the fact, I totally agree, we don't want them to be ridiculous and I don't want big purple gorillas on the top of every building either.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Somebody's, don't make any sense.
I like the big blue gorilla.
Well, I didn't mind him either, but I don't think we can put them on every business.
Well, I agree with you Commissioner.
I mean, I just think some of this doesn't make any sense.
That's what our effort is today to try and get some of these recommendations that we have and then hear what yours are and then get something going to change it as soon as.
Well, Gerald and I have had the conversation too, that we're spending millions of dollars to try and get businesses to come in here and produce additional sales tax and then we make it difficult for them to sell their stuff because they won't give them an adequate signage. I just think that's counterproductive.
But we're treating those people that are, that we're spending all this money to bring here, we're treating them much better than we're treating the existing businesses that are already here.
Well, if they're willing to jump, if they're willing to jump through old hoops.
I mean, I know that like the Evans one, that's been going on forever and they've been denied several times. And not only that, the people that put up the signs and that that's their job, that's also putting them in a bind because they can't make a living because our ordinance is ridiculous. And that's not fair either. I just think this whole ordinance is completely unfair to just about everybody involved, including the city.
Do you think there, that it makes sense to have some kind of rational cap?
Yeah, I do. I mean, some kind of, but obviously ours isn't rational.
We need some ordinance, right. I mean, we need some ordinance. It just seems like we need a simpler. Oh, there's more presentation?
Yes, there is, there's quite a bit more actually.
Those are recommendations you guys can discuss, so let's.
Yeah. We'll get through these photos. And the next group of photos show what Commissioner Wilson was just discussing, discussing where we've denied permits for where they want to place the signage. Downtown Kitchen Store, they put this up unpermitted.
But that's also because, explain why though, because the ordinance does not say anything about these kind of signs. It reads completely differently than what you guys said.
Yeah, Commissioner, I agree, there's interpretation issues.
Well, and.
There's a door there, you're right.
And we do, we do consult with our legal team when there is and.
But nobody else reads that the way that the city reads it. No other person.
And I think as standard, if I can explain that for a moment, standard practice, when I analyze just like the zoning code that we didn't adopt because we have our own zoning code or look at other cities, most cities do that the same way. It's on frontage and frontage is considered where you front the street or where you have an entrance. And so that's why we interpret it that way and our legal counsel has also said that that is correct, so maybe we need to allow something different.
If you can see that from the highway and that's what we're trying to drop people down there and then we're telling them, oh, but you can't put signs there?
Also, it can't be up in the Clear Story area, so you would need a variance for that. This one we believe was done.
But what's the logic in that? Why? Why can't it be there?
It's a great question.
No, it is her job.
It's not her job to come up with the logic, she just enforces the rules we make. We're supposed to have the logic.
Well, I'm asking anybody at this table then to tell me, why can't it be right there when you have a highway that we're trying to draw people's attention from, why can't you put the sign in the most logical place?
Oh, no, I'm with you, I'm just saying she, it's not, you know.
None of us wrote it though.
Yeah, we didn't.
No one here wrote this.
Whitney's at Walmart.
Let's go ahead and get to our recommendation for what we think on that.
There's a few examples. Napoli's did get a variance for theirs. This one was a variance as well. Here's Cycle Ward, which was mentioned, existing signage and they would like to put signage on the back. I believe it would put them over square footage and the placement is not currently allowed. A roof sign was denied for this particular business and they wanted initially a freestanding sign, but they didn't have room or their grassy areas in the easement. Roof sign was also denied for, I believe this is Paradise Nails and they canceled that. Aaron's.
They wanted the.
When Cash, yeah, actually this should have said Cashland because Aaron's was existing, Cashland came into that in space, Aaron's exceeded already what was allowed. So any signage that Cashland did was going to exceed square footage and they also wanted a sign on the east side of that building right there, which was granted with a variance.
It's not a recent sign in that building.
But it's not fair that because Aaron's was too big, that other business doesn't get any.
Sorry.
What's our recommendation on this, Angela?
I'll get there. Marco's Pizza's the same, Apple, okay, sorry about that.
You serious?
We denied it, they did it anyway. We did nothing, okay? Honestly, code picks our battles, we have a lot of, you know, I mean, that was not a battle we chose to fight. Thank you, appreciate that. Honestly, the battle I'm going to fight is they got to fix a railing back here and that needs to happen. Applebee's had to have a variance to have that on their west side. Remax has spoken with us about painting a balloon back here. Probably going to exceed square footage and would not be allowed there. Existing roof sign, this is, would not be permitted today. Here's some recommendations for you to consider. Allow businesses to place signage on any site.
See, that helps staff too. If we need to be enforcing stuff, we need to enforce it and the ordinance needs to be right. If the ordinance, we think, if you don't want us to enforce the ordinance, then we need to fix it clearly. Go ahead.
Downtown wall signs shall be located within the Clear Story band between the first and second stories.
Get rid of it.
And no roof signage is allowed, do not prohibit all. We may want to have some allowed.
Yeah, I think roofs, they, it should be a restriction on the size of roof sign. You would want them to have something 20 foot high.
Right. We've seen a few businesses where they just don't have a lot of wall space and don't have an area for freestanding and maybe it should be something that we can consider as staff if the need is there. The next reason we deny signs, height and definition restrictions. We currently have, and I probably should have put it in here, we'll show it at the end. We have a definition for pole sign and a definition for ground sign and each have their Vanessa and I, when we talked about this one today, we can even hardly remember the reason we denied it. But originally, it was submitted as a ground sign, it exceeded the height for a ground sign, the guy debated with us, they needed this sign ASAP. We went back and forth, they stuck some poles in underneath it so then they could be considered a pole sign. Which shortly thereafter, the ordinance was changed to redefine the definition of a pole sign and now that would not be allowed. So that would fall into a gray area if we saw it today. I'm sorry. Because it was permitted. At the time it was permitted, they found a loophole in the ordinance and we had to permit it. I think it's a lovely sign, really. It's very modern and what we're seeing that people want to do. This is one where I believe Andrea goes to church and they wanted to move this little ground sign right here. And if they would have moved the ground sign, it would not meet today's requirements for ground sign. It's, it can't show the legs as poles, based on our definitions. Farmer's Market, we had to deny this. Refresh my memory, Vanessa?
It as well doesn't meet the ground sign ordinance.
Okay.
Because the poles are showing.
Right. And we couldn't consider it a pole sign because of the height. It has to have an eight foot clearance there and it did not. Here's an existing sign that we cannot permit today because it's too wide. When we, we saw it the other day, so we got a shot of it real quick. When I measured it on the aerial view, it looks like it's 20 feet with just the signage. If you include the base, then it's like 25. We could not approve this today because it does not meet either the ground or the pole sign definition.
Then I think we just need to get rid of the ground and pole sign.
I've got a recommendation coming.
Yeah, let's get to the recommendations part.
Oakwood Christian Church, we would not be able to approve their sign today. It is too tall for a ground sign and too wide for a ground sign, definitely not a pole sign. Here are our current definitions. A lot of info, I won't bore you with that at the moment because here's what staff would recommend at least code. Get rid of our, lower our height restriction maybe from, increase it from 30 to 32, we're still lower than 35 where we were. And it seems like that would encompass a lot of them that we've denied for height. And put pole and ground signs under big broad definition of freestanding, something like right here. So that allows for freedom of design and them to do what they want to do because if it doesn't block traffic, I don't, I don't know that we care based on some of the examples that we showed. Window signs are the final thing to cover. Usually if we get a request, it almost always exceeds the amount allowed. There's what we currently allow. And as you can see down here, 2014, we had 11 requests for window signs and we know every business has them. 2015, 15 permitted and in so far in 2016, three. Enforcement is really difficult. You could have probably three inspectors working sign ordinances all day long if we were to attack all the window sign permits. And I don't think, people are not getting them permitted on purpose. I think it's just because businesses aren't aware that they have to get it permitted. So it's just another area that's very challenging in the ordinance. Real quick, here's a couple of new businesses that came in and they did comply with square footage, but they had to reduce again. Walmart, they were in compliance. And I believe they were allowed right at what, a little under 2, 300?
Yeah, I don't have.
Yeah. I may have that somewhere. But when they came back to get signage on their canopies, they did have to have a variance for that because they had used up their existing on their building and their freestanding. McAllisters, they came in and they were over, they reduced down, they're great now, but they didn't do a freestanding sign. So if they ever come back and want a freestanding sign, they're going to be over. That's it?
I do have a question on the window one, on the, with the 40% and the 20%. I've never understood that, I thought that from the very beginning. I don't, I don't get it. Why do we care how much of their window is covered? And when I asked it before, I was told it's for safety reasons, but that doesn't apply either because there are some of the lanes that don't have windows at all. So you can't have that argument.
I don't know why that was, that became a part of this ordinance.
It was for safety reasons.
Okay.
It was for safety of the drivers so that they're not staring off at a window instead of driving. That was the purpose.
So we lower it to 20%, which makes it even harder to see? That makes zero sense.
Well, in downtown.
Completely illogical, makes zero sense.
Yeah, the mid-sides was a lot longer.
Yeah, you have to look harder then if it's smaller. That makes, that just makes, none of this is.
Mr. Mayor? Next up, Commissioner Wilson's down.
I'm good, good. Go.
We kind of started down this journey two years ago. We had a public hearing and heard a lot of information and this has been a problem. I kind of took the project on personally for about five minutes. When I realized that, that it was such a complex issue, but I spent more time on it than that, but actually when you look at the research of what some of the other cities do, there's some very good ideas I think we need to think about if we're going to rewrite this to incorporate. Edmund in particular has a very good one because they much like Enid have residential areas, they have commercial areas and then they have main corridor areas. And their ordinance is split into parts and you may have looked at it, but their allowances on their main corridors, which in our case would be 412 and 81, are for much larger signs because it's higher speed, it's bigger commercial businesses. Then when they get to the residential, it's much more restrictive. I mean, I don't want a 20 foot pole sign in my neighborhood. So I think we have to break it out a little bit in terms of what's reasonable. And, you know, I've said this before, I think in public here, you all may have heard me say it, in Destin, Florida, which is one of my favorite places to go, they must have a very restrictive sign ordinance. They all look the same and you drive down the main corridor and they're the same shape, the same material. And I guarantee you, you can find Lowe's and you can find the grocery store and you can find the CVS pharmacy without pole signs with flashing lights on them everywhere. So it's a gorgeous city and they've obviously dealt with this in a much more restrictive way. So we need to be careful about just saying, we're going to open Pandora's box because everybody's complaining and we're just going to let this go. I think we have to find a middle ground. What we have now is not good and that's a hard ordinance to write. But I'd recommend as we go forward that we at least try to break it into three, three areas. I think our main corridors, kind of our commercial and downtown in particular, again, in downtown, we don't want a 20 foot sign on top of somebody's building that their building happens to be six stories, that's going to look terrible.
Well, I think downtown would have to.
So you may want to consider kind of breaking it up into districts and maybe the regulations are slightly different in each district.
Seems rational, but if we can do it in such a way that it's not, you know, this, it shouldn't be that long. I mean, if we have different caps for different areas, makes perfect sense, but, but you know, it should, I get that it's, yeah, I mean, we had, what we have is pretty complicated. I think at the end of the day, we could get something that still accomplishes what I agree is a goal of not going overboard without 35 pages of.
And well, it shouldn't take a year for somebody to get a sign on their business.
No, I mean, there's clearly problems with this, it needs to be redone and I agree. You know, it seems too, when you drive around and you look at the signs, that the really successful businesses that have a national presence and national marketing have a, have signs that are a reasonable sign.
Yeah.
But when you're, when you're advertising a bar and nude dancing, you want one that's 50,000 feet tall and this, I mean, it's kind of an inversely proportional to how big of a sign they should have. So we have to control, we have to control that.
Where do we go from here? Well, we've made some recommendations when we were listening to your input. I think we're going to work on a draft ordinance and we probably need to bring a draft ordinance back to another study session.
Yeah.
It's my thinking. And then get further feedback and then bring it to a meeting for a vote.
I like the district concept that David was talking about.
I do too.
Angela, I think you pulled this.
Angela, I think you called this morning about, um, difference, different requirements to install wood versus metal signs. Is that limited as well in this ordinance?
There's an odd section in here. Do you want to speak to that?
Uh, there's a section in our ordinance where if it's, if it's made of masonry and wood-like material, then it's exempt. It's kind of weird. We don't get too many of those, but.
Wood-like material?
Yeah, let me see if I can find it.
We're kind of like, mm.
Another issue that needs to be addressed too is political signs. I meant to bring that up. Currently, our standard largest size for political signs is not like a piece of plywood. It's a four by six, I think. It should be four by eight. So you may want to look too at what the political sign, uh, ordinance says and maybe consider revisions in that also.
We want to go much smaller.
For, for some reason on this la, on.
They all have lights in them or something.
Before.
On, on the current version of the sign ordinance that we're in, it, political signs fell under that temporary sign section and so it restricted it to 16 square feet. And then smaller and residential, I think it's like a real estate size sign. So 16 square feet is what we were telling everybody, but I've, I've seen some larger ones out there.
Four by 82.
Right.
Trying to make it thick materials because it's so expensive to do that in the first place.
Right.
I'm kind of going through some of our notes when Dr. V had his meeting. This one just kind of pops out, banner inside the building on a back wall.
Yeah.
It's a win.
That's one of those ones. Like who, why is it your business?
Inside the building? If it's inside the building on the back wall, would that's something we?
We don't address that. That's why I, I, I was there when that comment was stated and I don't know that we've ever gone inside and told somebody to take a sign off.
Maybe it was, maybe we confused it with, it was by a window or something and it was window signage.
It was Paul Stone. I released person down within the things they said.
I remember, yeah, Paul talking about that.
And here's, I mean, I'm just on lots of things like zoning and building permits and sign permits. I get really tired of us assuming that they're not telling the truth every time they say something to us. Because all of the people that I deal with are not people that make things up. And every single time we bring something like this up, we get met with, well, that's probably not really what happened or that's probably not true. And I'm completely in agree, in agreement that, that it's not always accurate. It may not be always the, the whole story. But stop assuming that every time they come to you and say, well, this is how I did it here, that they're lying. Because it's not, they're not, that's, nobody's interested in doing that.
David, we've got about two minutes.
Not yet, because I never got an answer to my question.
No, if you have a question out there, let's get the answer.
I was just waiting for them to respond and you guys changed it, so I'd like to come back if you don't mind.
The answer to your question was that if it's a, constructed entirely of masonry and wood materials, they are exempt from contracting and, and being licensed to do the work, which in my opinion would be a safety hazard. I mean, a freestanding sign made of,
wood or mason.
Yeah, just some random person put up wood. Just seems odd, but.
I think it was supposed to mean that they were exempt from like the electrical requirements.
Oh, is that what it is?
I think that's what it was supposed to be.
They would still be subjected to other criteria. We'd still have to calculate the square footage. But a licensed co, contract, sign contractor would not have to install that.
Yeah, the second part of that phone call was about political signs. David brought that up. But, um, we permit political signs, but home show can't put out signs? Is that what I understand? Is there something that prevents them from?
The home show?
Yeah, street signs.
Nobody ever talked to us about any home show and signs. We would have allowed it. It's a special event.
We do the Corvette, uh.
Show every year. We did, um, the food drive.
I know the food drive signs got in trouble a few years ago.
I've brought the home show up before too.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I think we just had the home show recently and I don't think we ever got a request.
No, she didn't ask or they didn't ask.
Anne, do you have a specific? No, I'm just asking about the call that I received earlier, so if there's no issue with it.
Mm-hmm. As long as they, um, keep their signs within the required size, they should be fine.
That's why they put us.
Uh-huh.
David?
Well, you know, this is what, we're starting to get into things that make this so difficult to rewrite. What about the banners and signs, temporary signs, floating signs, the ones that spin around with lights on them? The ordinance is going to have to cover, um, the electronic signs because there's a huge variability in the lumen output for the electronic signs. And, and that's another whole issue because we've got one or two in town right now that need to come down. They're too bright at night. You can't see past them. So.
Manual.
Again, you've got to have, you know, all that needs to be in there. I was looking through my notes, like Rodney said, those are some things, brightness levels with those kinds of signs, the temporary signs and bi, and banners.
Did you say anything about?
Who can make signs? Apparently we're fairly restrictive in terms of whether the sign has to be made by a professional company or somebody can make their own sign with a wood, piece of wood and paint it themselves and put it out. It laws it meets the size and so forth. Are we going to allow, you know, handwritten lemonade signs? Tammy's always mad about the lemonade permit issue and, and those are appropriate things. Those are things that need to be answered in this ordinance and it makes it impossible to write, but I, I challenge you to try, but those issues all need to be a part of this.
Well, we do have some businesses where people have apparently just gone out with a paintbrush and, and painted their signage on and it looks bad.
Oh, yeah?
But not to say everybody is going to go paint a sign and look bad.
No.
And bad is subjective.
I could not paint a sign because I, I, I'm terrible at that, but some people have talent. There you go.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.